The call has been ordered and announced at a quorum, Mr. President. First portion of the meeting, we have a workshop. And first, we'll go through the discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda items. We'll go to regular session. Public hearing, anybody having questions or comments on public hearings? Adam Long. We're down to the consent agenda now. Anybody having questions on any item in the consent agenda? And we have reports. And we may or may not have a closed session. Is that correct, City Manager? You're still on mute. Oh, there we are.
I've got it off now, Mayor. Yeah, no, we will not have an executive session tonight, Council.
Oh, no, okay. Thank you. That's all of that. Now, we have the fleet and facilities building updated.
So tonight, Keith Marvin is going to walk you through where we are related to the new fleet and facilities building. As you know, that was something that Council approved us moving forward with in relation to a future CO bond issuance, which will occur in the spring. So he has been hard at work on it, and I'm going to turn it over to him and let him walk you through the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Can everybody see my screen okay and hear me okay? Excellent. Mayor, Council, just a quick update. You've seen me here to talk about this before. Just give you an update where we are. I do want to point out that we have Francis Moskarenas with us in the audience. He is our Internal Services Manager over both our fleet and facilities operation here in Public Services, and he's available to answer any questions if any come up that I'm unable to answer. And he really has been spearheading this project for us, and he's been doing a great job, and I'm really, really proud of his effort. So we'll walk through this real quickly. If I can make sure that I can move my... There we go. So just real quick, a history, just walk back through how we got where we are. Photograph here of the existing fleet and facilities building, built in 1976, just under 10,000 square feet. Four small vehicle bays, one heavy vehicle bay, a fire apparatus bay. We have a total of eight fleet staff members, including five mechanics and one apprentice mechanic that works for us part-time. Total of 13 facilities staff members, and we do have the occasional LISD project search intern that assists us there as well. I don't believe we have any of those with us right now due to COVID, but we usually have one with us, and they're very helpful. We deal with daily visitors, internal primarily, but we do have some folks come from the outside for service-related issues. But between 12 and 20 visitors a day, and we are maintaining 632 assets out of this facility. Back in 2014, we did an assessment of both the condition and the needs, and BRW conducted that assessment and feasibility study for us, and they did estimate a total project budget for a new facility in 2014 dollars at 15 and a half million. We chose not to include that in the 2015 bond program that we intended to fund this facility by cash funding at the time. We did, however, as part of that study, determine that fleet utilization was about 75% general fund and 25% utility fund. And so we began setting funds aside to fund that building with cash, primarily out of both of those funds, 75% general fund and 25% utility fund. At the 2019 February retreat, we discussed the fact that cash funding would take a very long time for us to be able to construct that facility, and at that retreat, the Council directed us to review our funding options. And so we came back at the August 2019 budget workshop, and we talked about using certificates of obligation to fund this. And we did, of course, using some escalated cost estimates based on that 2014 study, we estimated that the cost of the project would be approximately $18 million there in August of 2019. City Council did support that recommendation and directed us to move forward on that path. So in 2020, we hired the architectural firm of Kirkpatrick Architecture Studio to update that 2014 study. I'm sorry, we did that in 2019. We hired them in 2019, staffed them, and consulted. We visited multiple facilities. We worked to refine the layout that BRW had put together for us in 2014, and we completed that study in December of 2019, and we presented that at the February 2020 retreat. And the revised project cost was $20.1 million at that February retreat. You're seeing a pattern here of cost escalation of various projects. This, what you see in front of you, you saw at the 2020 City Council Retreat about a year ago. The proposed location on the right-hand side of the screen, down there off of Sewer Treatment Plant Road, just before you get to the wastewater plant, just east of the police training facility, and then, of course, there at the corner of East Valley Ridge and North Keighley, where our Public Services Keighley complex, the Stephen Albakis complex is where that fleet building sits today. This is the site layout that you saw back then. There's been some changes. I'll walk through a little bit of that, but primarily, we have pushed everything to the west a little bit to try to get away from the pond that you can see in this picture on the top right-hand corner of that picture. There's some wet areas, some pond impoundments there, and dealing with that was going to drive the cost up. So we've shifted the site a little bit closer to the existing fire facility, and we've actually eliminated some of the paving on the project to try to keep us out of the expensive area of that pond. Floor plan here really hasn't changed much, showing the fleet portion on the right-hand side of the page with a service base, ample storage, tire storage, park storage, fuel, well, not fuel, but oil storage, everything associated with vehicle maintenance. And then, we're actually working on conditioned space as part of this to really enhance the work environment in there. It won't be like an office air conditioning, but it would be enough to keep it about 20 degrees cooler within the workspace than it is outside. So instead of working in the current uninsulated metal building at 100-degree weather, you could work in nice 80-degree weather here. The left-hand side of the page here is the administrative offices and the facilities groups, working areas, some workshop space in the back, security room with the keying system and everything we use for changing out keys, adequate locker space, bathroom space, break area, conference space, a lot of things that neither of these groups has adequate space for today. So that was the floor plan that you saw in 2020. Really not a lot of changes to the floor plan. We're working continuously on refinement of the plans. I actually have the plans here on my desk, a little over 100 pages of document that we continue to refine as we move forward. So we are in the detailed design effort. Y'all did approve the detailed design contract with Kirkpatrick Architecture on June 15th of this last year. And then, based on the success of the recently completed fire stations and the ongoing or wrapping up Thrive project right now, we, as the city, did decide that it would make a lot of sense for us to move forward with this project under that C-MAR, that Construction Manager at Risk method of delivery. So we brought on Peak Program Value, Chris Squadra, to assist with project controls and the selection process of that C-MAR contractor. So that C-MAR contract, RFP, was issued in July of last year, July of 2020. We actually received 22 proposals from different firms that were interested in building this project for us. So that was a remarkable turnout or interest in it. We assembled a selection committee. So myself, Gina, Director of Strategic Services, Francis, our Internal Services Manager, and then Chief McGrath from the Fire Department, Deputy Chief McGrath, rounded out the voting members, and we wanted that different perspective and those different folks that would be involved in this project from different points of view on that committee. And then, we had the purchasing manager, actually, the outgoing and the incoming, the new purchasing manager were both part of the process. The architect was part of the process, and then Chris Squadra was part of the process. They were non-voting. They were serving an advisory role and provided a lot of advice and input on how the voting members go about the selection process. It was a very arduous process with the number of submittals that we had, but we were able to shortlist by September three firms. Those firms, those three shortlisted firms, were asked to provide more detailed project information, including their costs, cost estimates for the project, and then their fees that they would charge us to oversee the construction for us. In 2020, in October, we interviewed those three shortlisted firms. We did, as a committee, select cross-land construction company as the number-one point getter. And so we went forward with the negotiation for that C-MAR project. I do have on here that that C-MAR pre-construction services contract was approved in January. So what really happened was it was negotiated. The attorneys blessed it, signed off on it, said it is good to go. Right now, we're waiting on signatures. That contract value is a little under $10,000. That's only for their pre-construction phase. So their involvement in finalizing the construction plans and assisting with recommendations for design changes, value engineering pieces of the project, and then their bid services, all of that comes to a total of $10,000. So that'll be signed out of the City Manager's office, and then the actual construction contract with the guaranteed maximum price would come in July or August for Council approval. So future items, I just showed you the plans. The architect is working to finalize those. We've got that C-MAR contractor onboard now. We're having weekly meetings as we work out the individual details of the project. I've got actually a rendering of what that project would look like. That's that administrative side that you see in the picture there, and that is looking from Valley Ridge. As you're looking down Sewer Treatment Plant Road, you would see this piece of the building, this portion where we're trying to make, you know, an amenity to that corner so that it looks like a well-designed, well-built, professional city facility, and we want to be proud of the look of that facility. So we do anticipate completion of the architectural design in May of 2021, those final construction drawings. We do need to demolish the old animal shelter building. It is still out there, and we're still deciding whether we do that as part of the overall C-MAR project, or if we try to do that in advance of the project. It would just be a numbers game. If we can do it a little cheaper on the front end, we would do it that way. We do need P&amp;Z and City Council approval of the engineering site plan and plat. Those are in the works, and we are working with the planning department on submittal deadlines and information as we prepare those documents. Mentioned the C-MAR contract award. So once those drawings are finalized in May, we'll do two things. We'll submit for the building permit for a plan review through the permitting department, as well as they'll take those finalized drawings and they'll go out to bid for the subcontracts as they develop that guaranteed maximum price. And again, we would expect to be back in front of you in July or August to award that. We will also have additional consultant contracts to be approved. I mentioned PPV. We did bring them onboard as a pre-construction phase to assist with the C-MAR selection. They have been very successful in project controls and cost management on the Thrive facility, as well as some other projects they've been involved with. So we would anticipate bringing a contract to have them continue through construction phase services to assist us with that. And then, the Rommel Company, Ramon, has been involved in a couple of our projects as an owner's representative. Collectively, the Public Services Department has the expertise to be able to manage this project, but we don't have the time and the ability on a daily basis to catch those little things that having an owner's representative on the project can accomplish. So we will be bringing a contract, and both of those will likely come to you the first meeting in March. And then, as we get closer to construction, we'll also have a materials testing contract to be approved to go along with that. And then, of course, the certificates of obligation. And this next slide, the information on here comes from David in Finance, and the picture over here is a rendering of that front entry of that facility. We want it to look professional. We're debating on the logo over the desk, whether it's City Louisville or whether it's the Louisville Way logo, but we'll have a nice raised logo on the wall as you enter the facility. Not going to read this whole thing, but the same process as we did in 2022 with a resolution authorizing the publication of notice of intent. Then in April, an actual approval ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of the certificates of obligation. Speaking with David, that dollar amount is going to be in that 16 to 17 million dollars, and that will vary a little bit depending on the interest rates and all those things that go into that. And David will explain that in greater detail when he comes to you with that resolution. But we expect to market and sale in April and May, close and have the dollars in hand by June of 2021, which will work out really well with our schedule when we come to you in July or August to approve the overall contract. We'll have the dollars in hand, which is obviously a prerequisite to approving the contract. And then, obviously, we have construction. We expect to start late summer of 2021. If we approve it in August, we would hit the ground that month or no later than September. We do expect it to be approximately 14 months of construction. We will be doing the furniture fixtures and equipment procurement separate from the C-MAR contract. So we'll be scheduling the move-in of that equipment. We really expect staff to occupy the facility no later than the year-end of 2022. And of course, we did mention at the retreat, we will be asking for an additional mechanic very likely in that '22, '23 budget year. We really don't have room for that mechanic in the current facility, but we have reached the number of assets that we maintain. And then, certainly, when we talk about annexing Castle Hills, we'll even have additional vehicles coming with that that we'll need to maintain. So we'll need that additional mechanic about the time we get into this facility. So here's a site plan. You can see where we really have moved that building to the left, and you can see that along the top right side of the parking area, we are just skirting the edge of that pond. So we did remain outside the limits of that pond intentionally. We are adding the fuel island on the right-hand side of the facility so that the fuel island that's here at Keighley will be removed and relocated down there. And then, the floor plan, very, very similar to what you saw before, not a lot of changes. We're primarily spending a lot of time on refinements. Where do we put hose reels? How many oil hoses do we need at each reel and that sort of thing? Very highly exciting meetings to have, but we are involving the very people that will be working on those vehicles in there, and they are giving their advice and their requests, and we are working through those diligently. And we believe that the architect's doing a good job. He's got the right team involved, and he's listening, and he's really working in those things that we need, that those folks that will be using the facility are going to need. I'm going to pull up real quick one additional item here, if I can, and just kind of show you the look that we went back with the architect with. He's given us a couple of options. Option A is in front of you, and again, that's that enhanced view of the building that will be visible from Valley Ridge as you drive by on that sweeping curve or as you turn down Sewer Treatment Plant Road. And then, the back of the building is tilt wall. The bays are... We've got 25 feet clear in there to be able to raise up the apparatus, and we'll actually be able to open the cab of a vehicle and lift it of a fire truck and lift it up and work on it at the same time. We won't have to actually pull it out into the yard to be able to do that, which is what we've got to do today. Another view, what you see on the right side of the building here is the east far east side of the building as it faces the sewer treatment plant. So it's a tilt wall as well. And then, option B was more of the traditional red brick, and this is the one that we, as a staff, really recommended moving forward with, unless I hear anything different tonight. That's what will end up in the plans. Again, still tilt wall, just a little bit different color scheme on that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that y'all might have about the facility.
City Manager, have any questions?
Keith, you might discuss a little bit of what's going to happen at Keighley and Valley Ridge with the existing site, some of the demo and the cleanup on that site, just briefly.
Yeah, that's one that we're still up in the air on right now, the timing and everything. Obviously, you know, we'll move out of the facility that we're in. We'll move into this brand-new facility, and we will then schedule what happens next. And we intend to demo that facility. We intend to... And I also presented, I believe it was at the 2019 retreat, the master plan for this campus. At some point in the future, we will need additional office space at this building, at this campus, and there is, long-term, no funding yet, no request for any funding yet, but long-term, there would be some additional office space and perhaps shop space for the functions that will remain here at Keighley. Actually, sending facilities down the road will free up their facility shop, which will allow us to expand a little bit. But as we continue to grow, we'll look to redevelop that front piece, that front Keighley. Once we move out of there, we can tear that building down and create that space for that future expansion. We would then, and I mentioned it before, Building B and C, which was actually two buildings at one time and are now combined into one, we often call it B-only, but it's actually started out as two buildings. It would actually come down once we build that new building where the old fleet building is, and those folks would move into that, and then we would demo that old building as well. But we're talking long-term there. Short-term, we do intend to, you know, remove the fuel island, remove the building, clean up that site, and prepare it for future use.
Not hearing anything, I will stop my screen here and turn it back to City Manager Barron.
So, Mayor, Council, that is all we have for your workshop tonight. So, Mayor, unless there's questions, we would be ready to move on.
Give one more chance for questions, the Council. Move forward.
Public hearing number one. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from Warehouse District to Heavy Industrial District on 10.03 acres located on the east side of South Railroad Street, approximately 1,300 feet south of State Highway 121 Business. The applicant is looking to plat this land into three lots and relocate John Burns Construction to one of the proposed lots. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Planning Director Richard Lutke is available to address any questions.
We have... I'm sorry, Mayor. We have had no one submit any requests to speak, and there are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, good. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved. Second.
I did.
Okay.
Ready?
Hold on.
Show Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson made the motion. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all aye votes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Is there any discussion at this time? Okay. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 10.03 acres legally described as five tracts of land out of the JW King survey, abstract number 695, and the JH Haven survey, abstract number 541, located on the east side of South Railroad Street, approximately 1,300 feet south of State Highway 121 Business. From Warehouse District zoning to Heavy Industrial District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest in general welfare demands something change in amendment there in May, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Second, third, hold on.
Show Councilmember Troyer made the motion. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all aye votes.
Okay, motion passes. Continue to that one, too.
Public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for a contractor's yard with more than 10% outside storage with one associated variance on 4.63 acres located on the east side of South Railroad Street, approximately 1,300 feet south of State Highway 121 Business. John Burns Construction is looking to relocate the business to South Railroad Street, which requires the approval of an SUP and is requesting one variance to allow a right-turn lane with a total length of 130 feet. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the ordinance and one associated variance as set forth in the caption. Planning Director Richard Lutke is available to address any questions, and we receive no cards requesting to speak. Mayor?
Good. If there's no...
I had a quick question.
Yes.
For Richard. I just wanted to clarify that the outdoor storage portion is just on the, what is that? The easternmost lot? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Okay. City Secretary, hold on.
Show Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson made the motion. Councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all aye votes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion on the regular portion of public hearing?
Moved to approve.
Sir, second.
Second.
Okay, that's...
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there any discussion?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit... by granting a special use permit for a contractor's yard with more than 10% outside storage on approximately 4.63 acres legally described as a portion of land out of the JW King Survey Abstract Number 695 and the JH Haven Survey Abstract Number 541, located on the east side of South Railroad Street, approximately 1,300 feet south of State Highway 121 Business and zoned Heavy Industrial District, providing for repealer severability penalty and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
City Secretary Call the roll.
Show Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green made the motion. Councilmember Troyer seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Good, thank you, motion passes.
Visitor, visitor, citizen's forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience stamping a feat, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. Mayor received no cards and there are no hands raised to speak during visitor citizen forum.
Continue to add a seat.
Consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so request. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor received no cards and there is no hands raised to speak on this item.
Got a motion to approve?
Moved to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Good, City Secretary Call the roll.
Show Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green made the motion. Councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I comments.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to regular hearings, Saturday, on seven, excuse me.
That's correct. Consideration of four, of four alter, alternative standards associated with a proposed industrial building on a 12, 12-acre lot located at the northeast corner of MacArthur Boulevard and State Highway 121. Two office warehouse buildings that, to, to appeal to smaller tenants with heavier office use and lower truck traffic are planned for this lot. For the I-35E corridor overlay district, the following alternative standards are requested. A, to waive the maximum block perimeter. B, to allow a parking ratio of one space per 2,000 square feet of warehouse space. C, to allow 20% brick or stone on street-facing facades. And D, to allow a seven-foot secondary sidewalk. The overlay board recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the four alternative standards as set forth in the caption. Planning Director Richard Lutke is available to address any questions. And we have no hands raised on this item either, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I had a quick question, um, for Richard. So just so, just to clarify, this, this property has been zoned light industrial. So we are not changing the zoning. This is a, uh, this use is approved by right on this property, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so I mean, uh, with that being the case, I'm assuming there was no notification required to the, to the townhome development that's just, is that to the northeast of that?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so have we, I wouldn't assume we would have gotten any calls about this case then?
No, we have not.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
City Secretary Call the roll.
Show Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson made the motion. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Motion passes. Continue on the agenda.
Number eight. Consideration of an appointment to the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team. Assistant City Manager Melinda Goller and Councilmember Teager Gilmore were appointed by the city council to serve on the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team on June 15th, 2015. Due to Assistant City Manager Goller's retirement, a new member will need to be appointed to serve in her position. City staff recommends Neighborhood Services Director Chris McGinn. The recommendation is that the council appoint Chris McGinn to the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, City Secretary Call the roll.
Show Councilmember Troyer made the motion. Councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Motion passes. Continue with number nine.
Consideration of allocating $500,000 for COVID-related expenses. Staff recommends allocating $500,000 of COVID emergency response funding as follows. $150,000 for L I S D connectivity, $25,000 to replenish the United Way Barriers Fund, $250,000 for COVID gap funding, and $75,000 to address food insecurity. Recommendation is that the city council allocate $500,000 as set forth in the caption
Do we have a motion?
Moved to approve. Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? Need a city manager, if you'd like to add anything at this point?
Tell Mayor and Council, this was the item that was discussed with you at your workshop last week. So, uh, we're merely bringing this forward to, to get, uh, formal approval. Uh, and so with that, Mayor, I don't have any other comments.
Okay, thank you. City Secretary Call the roll.
I show Councilmember Gilmore made the motion. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Motion passes. Continue.
Item 10. Consideration of a resolution extending the declaration of local disaster for public health emergency until 11:59 PM on February 15th, 2021. Ongoing evaluation of circumstances related to the virus and the updated recommendations of the CDC and the Texas Department of State Health Services indicate that the conditions necessitating the disaster declaration have and will continue to exist for a period extending beyond February 1st, 2021. The recommendation is that the city council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion second. City Attorney?
I'm sorry, she doesn't need to read, that's my fault.
She didn't?
No, I love that you not said. I know.
Okay. I want, I want a question. City Secretary Call the roll.
Show Councilmember Troyer made the motion. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. Now we're down to reports, uh, first is State Detectives Comptroller's Transparency Star Award.
So Mayor and Council, Gina, I'm going to have to stumble when I say this a little bit. I've called her Thompson for many years, but she's changed her name to McGrath, so I'm going to have to get used to saying that. Uh, but she, uh, has a couple of items that she'd like to report to you on. One is the hiring of our new court manager. So Gina, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I'll just stick with Gina.
That works, that works just fine.
Okay.
Well, uh, our Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson actually mentioned this award to you at the end of the last council meeting, but I wanted to provide a little bit more detail just for all of you that maybe haven't had a chance to go out and look at it. It's the Texas State Comptroller's Star Award for Transparency and Traditional Finances. And what basically that means is that, um, we are able to provide easy online access to important financial data. Um, and so one of our staff members, Deanne Tompkins, in our office, has spent a little bit of time gathering up some information that we already had, um, compiled and had in different places throughout the city into the format that the state of comptrollers really thinks is beneficial to our residents. So we have that now out on our website and I wanted to take a second and just show you where it was. Um, if you can, let me see if I can show that. If you go out to our website, if you look at the About Us and go to Financial Services, and then you can look at the Financial Transparency, there's a new, um, little divider or division there. And we have our other things like our checkbook register, our revenue sources, kind of our budgets and financial, um, reports. But when you click on Financial Transparency here, you'll see that it has all of the traditional finance information that the comptroller fills its importance, like our revenues, our expenses. It has some per capita information there. It also has historical tables and charts, and then it has all of the other ways that we have really tried to show that we're committed to transparency and open government. So anything that we see that we think would help our residents understand our financial data just a little bit better, we put out here. So I wanted to make sure that you saw it out on the website. We also have this downloadable raw data. So if somebody's out there, they don't like the way that we've presented the data or shown the data, they can actually go out and look at that raw data and manipulate it how they would rather see it. So I think there's a lot of good information out there. I just wanted to let you know that it's out there. And we also, because I always like to shamelessly plug our metrics dashboard, we've linked this information, um, from the metrics as well, because it's another way to show performance and financial data, uh, to our residents. So that out there for everyone. You will notice that it only goes through 2019 because we don't have our 2020 audit back yet. As soon as we get those numbers, we'll definitely update it. So we'll keep this updated. Um, the other thing that you might be interested to know is that the comptroller's office actually has five categories of transparency stars. The first one is the traditional finances. Um, once you get it, you can start working on the other ones. And so, um, Deanne is already starting to work on combining some of that information. Um, the other four categories are public pensions, economic development, our debt obligations, and then our contracts and procurement. So we already have, again, a lot of that data out there. And so it's really just putting it in the right format, putting it in the right location where everybody can see it. Um, but we're excited that we're able to put some more data out there. And if you ever see or come across anything that you think would be beneficial for us to put out there, let us know, we're happy to do that. So that's, um, the transparency award. Does anyone have any questions about that award?
Ms. McGrath?
Yes, sir.
Um, my understanding is that this, you, this particular award, this particular one that we just got, actually unlocks a whole bunch of new ones from the comptroller, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, as soon as we get that first one, now we can go after the other four. And so we will definitely be doing that.
Outstanding, thank you. Very proud to see that.
Great. Okay, well, if nobody has any other questions, I did want to spend just a second to introduce our newest, um, he may be our newest manager, I think he probably is our newest manager. He's been here in less than two weeks, I believe. Jeremy Leonard is our municipal court manager. We're so excited to have him. He comes, um, with, to us with a, a lot of experience in municipal court operations. And I wanted to let him tell you that a little bit. Um, very impressive and I can't be more excited to have him. I think we're in really great hands. But Jeremy, do you want to give him a little bit of your background?
Absolutely. Uh, I just want to start out by thanking the city for bringing me onto the team here. And I look forward to the opportunity and the great things that I believe we can accomplish in the coming years. Uh, just to give you a little overview of my history, uh, I have had 18 years of experience working in various municipal court systems in the state of Texas. Uh, this includes time spent at the city of Venus, Burleson, Fort Worth, and most recently DeSoto. Uh, while at DeSoto Municipal Court, I served seven years as the manager of court services there, uh, where we were able to make, uh, many innovative advancements. Uh, back in 2017, I did receive my Level 3 Certified Municipal Court Clerk Certification. This makes me one of only 124 certified municipal courts in the state of Texas at this time. Uh, I've also had the privilege of serving on the Board of the Texas Court Clerks Association as a director-at-large. Uh, and I'm also a part of their technology, I'm the chair over their technology committee since, uh, 2019. So that's just a little bit about me.
So as you can say, we're in good hands. Um, we're thrilled to have him and we've put him straight to work and he's, he's just gotten involved in everything, all the technology with the, um, with our CAD system changing and, um, our websites are updating in court right now. So he's got a lot on his plate, but we're happy to have him. And that's all I had, Mayor.
Yeah, city council reports. Uh, we'll start with, uh, Councilmember Troyer.
Excuse me, nothing, Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor. My usual MCL grand report. Uh, it's really the Lewisville Grand Theater. We'll change the name there. Um, Acoustic Fridays coming up on February 5th. I mentioned last time, the topic for this songwriter challenge coming up is, um, chapters and it's about changes in the chapters of your life. So if you have the songwriting urge and want to write about a song with that theme and then present it for the first time to an audience, uh, that opportunity is on February 5th, the Songwriters Challenge. And then, um, Louisville Lake Symphony will have, uh, Daniel Bay, who's the winner of the, uh, 2021 Young Artist Competition perform on February 14th. And that's a virtual performance, so, um, I don't think anybody can actually attend at the facility, but you can, uh, pay a small fee and see the concert online. Of course, acoustic jams in addition to the songwriter challenge continue, I should have said that earlier. A couple of postponements, I mentioned before, the Hot Club of Cowtown, originally scheduled for Texas Tunes on February 6th, that's been postponed, no date, new date announced, and the same for Beat Boot, Beat Root Revival and Pat Byrne, which was scheduled for the Black Box on the 13th. Uh, still no new date on that one. Art Exhibits World Cultures is presented by the Visual Arts League, uh, from, uh, starting on January 2nd. That will only, uh, continue for a few more days until February 6th. And then the Martin Luther King Junior Student Show that began on January 21st, that will continue through, uh, February 23rd. And that's presented by Lewisville ISD. And I believe that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we're down to Councilmember Gilmore.
Mayor, really the only thing I want to remind folks of is that, uh, you need to make sure that you're checking with your physician and maybe your pharmacy about, uh, COVID vaccinations. I know that the Denton County, um, is, got a lot of media juice right now and it's an amazing process that we've got going. I'm, I'm reading about 16 lanes wide of vaccination over at Texas Motor Speedway and they're planning to put out about 10,000, uh, vaccinations a day for three days. But those are for folks who have already signed up. So I highly recommend that if you, uh, can get on a list with your physician, uh, with your pharmacy, uh, and the county, that will, uh, get you a better opportunity as the vaccines are coming in, in multiple different channels. That's all I have today.
Councilmember Jones?
Uh, no report, uh, just, uh, uh, double down on what, uh, Councilman Gilmore just said, make, make sure you get signed up. Get, get that, uh, get that shot as soon as possible.
Councilmember Jones, when can you take your, take the vaccine? Can you just check that with your doctor or?
So the, the word I'm hearing is 90 days after, uh, after, uh, you, uh, you've cleared your symptoms.
That's what I heard too.
Yeah, you may have some adverse effects.
Okay, thank you.